The Board of Education met earlier today in a work session which began at 3:00 PM. It is recalling to order. Treasure, call the roll please.
Mr. Schnerrenberger.
Here.
Dr. Ritchie.
Here.
Mrs. Mock.
Here.
Mr. Porter.
Here.
Dr. Stellers.
Here.
All members present, at this time would we all rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we will call upon our student achievement liaison, Kathy Mock, to read our mission statement of the Austintown Schools.
The mission of the Austintown Local School District, building upon a tradition of excellence with a vision for the future, is a commitment to guarantee all students a state-of-the-art, global education which stimulates critical thinking, curiosity of the unknown, and lifelong learning through a progressive curriculum, integrated technology, a dedicated and dynamic staff, and outstanding community support.
Thank you Kathy. We're going to start tonight's meeting with asking Jack Kidd and Larry Cadment to come forward along with the Class of 1962. Kathy Mock and I served on the Planning Committee for the Awesome Austintown Event. Jack, Larry, and the Class of 1962, there has been the bond created with you, the community, and the school district, all because of those efforts to recognize and honor our local heroes. You all have a passion for this project, and it has been our pleasure to work with you in all the stages of bringing this proud, wonderful event about.
Jack, Larry, and members of the 1962 class, you have done so very much over the past months, not only to honor Marine Sergeant Jim Promisburger and Army Second Lieutenant Charles Brown, but all veterans. The Veterans Memorial is a cross-generational symbol of heroism to all who view it. The Austintown Local School District would like to take this opportunity to salute you for your tireless efforts and a job well done. And we have something very special to present you, and we'd like, if you could step down on the floor, and board members too.
We're going to also ask the board members to come down for this presentation. The Austintown Local School District would like to take this opportunity to salute you for your tireless efforts and a job well done. This plaque will be displayed at Fitch in recognition of your dedication and service. Thanks to you both and the Class of 1962.
So again, the plaque says, "In recognition of Jack Kidd, Larry Cadment, and the Class of 1962, for their dedication and service to the Austintown Local School District 2013." Let's hear it for our class.
We're going to turn this over to Jack and Larry now. This was a bit of a surprise to you, I think, tonight, wasn't it?
I'd classify it as a little bit more than a bit of a surprise, yeah. Thank you. Thank you all. And we were going to get up here and complain. Give me a minute. This is the first time we've gotten the young ladies in our committee to actually stand up in front of public, and they are wonderful. Thank you all. A year ago, the Fitch Class of 62 formed a committee to construct a memorial for two of our classmates who gave their lives in service to their country in Vietnam. We approached the Board of Education and asked for permission to install a small memorial near the football field. We received their approval and began fundraising activities, and thus began a truly amazing journey. We met regularly with the Board throughout the year, and somewhere along the way, things began to change, as our community began to recognize the importance of this project. During the project, the Board of Education and the administration provided support and encouragement. When we needed advice, there was always someone there to help. Periodically, we'd be called into Mr. Cola Luca's office to give him an update on our progress. He always listened with interest and asked us tough questions that caused us to think about what we were doing. When we spoke to board members, they were always interested in the project and offered suggestions and encouragement. We now recognize what we were experiencing was known as leadership. Today, our project is complete. It is a beautiful memorial to two brave young men who gave their lives in service to their country, but this memorial has become a focal point for community pride in Austintown. This is the place where parents can take their children, talk about courage, dedication, service, and sometimes even sacrifice. It is fitting that our students here at Austintown Schools often have the opportunity to visit this memorial and learn about a piece of Austintown-Fitch history. The memorial is a place that encourages love of country and respect for the men and women who serve that country, and it is a place that promotes pride in our community. The members of our committee often discuss this amazing journey, and we wonder how we got from the modest goal at the beginning to where we are today. It occurs to me that this Board and this administration had the vision to see what was inside the members of our committee and to see what could be accomplished. They knew what we could do before we knew what we could do. They had the conviction to offer their support and encouragement along the way, and finally, they had the vision or the wisdom to guide us toward the successful accomplishment of our goal, a goal that was far greater than anything we ever imagined we could or would do. Then it occurred to me, these are the kind of people that we want leaving our schools and our children, people with the vision to see the greatness that lies within all of our students, people who can inspire them to achieve that greatness, people with courage to offer the kind of support and encouragement that allows things to happen and the wisdom to guide along the way. Thank you Dave Schnerrenberger. Thank you Kathy Mock. Thank you Dr. Stellers. Thank you Dr. Ritchie. Thank you Mr. Porter. And thank you, Mr. Cola Luca, and your amazing staff for teaching us that we can be better than we ever thought we could be. Thank you all for your leadership that made this wonderful opportunity possible.
I've been sick for 10 days, so I'm only going to say a few words. We would also, at this time, like to thank Tim Kelty and the Hall of Fame Committee. One week after we dedicated the memorial inside the stadium, they had the Hall of Fame banquet and induction. And our two heroes, Sergeant James Promisburger and Lieutenant Charles Brown, were posthumously inducted into the Fitch High School Athletic Hall of Fame, and their names will go down in Fitch history forever. And we greatly appreciate that great honor that was bestowed on our classmates. Thank you.
Thank you once again, Jack and Larry, and the Class of 1962. Next, we call upon our Superintendent, Mr. Cola Luca, for a special presentation.
Good evening. End of last week, got a very, very surprising notice from the Ohio Department of Education. Moving into our two new buildings and doing all of the work and all the time that we put in, we've talked about in the past, didn't think much about our outlying buildings and the ones we are closing. And had a very surprising email from the State Superintendent recognizing one of our old buildings. Lenkirk and the Lenkirk staff has been invited to our board meeting if you can come up please while I talk about you. We did invite Mr. Russo. I don't believe he was able to make it tonight. And we invited all of the Lenkirk staff to come. They are being recognized by the Ohio Department of Education and our Board of Education for being a building of school promise. School Promise is an analysis done by the State Department of Education looking at the number of students that we showed progress and showed improvement with. And tonight, we want to recognize the Lenkirk staff and probably one of our last recognitions of our old buildings. Congratulations to you and to what you do for our students every day, and thank you so much, and bring that great tradition into our new Austintown Elementary. A round of applause for Lenkirk staff. Come down this way, because I want you to introduce yourselves as you. Just so you can get on TV. Come on, walk down. Great level that you taught last year, because I know we had a little bit of movement. And look at the camera when you do it so you get on TV. Go ahead Joyce.
I'm Joyce Swager. I was the secretary.
Andrea Fabrizio, kindergarten.
Anna Mae Sen, kindergarten.
Karen Schnerrenberger, kindergarten, now retired.
Stacy Banco, former third grade teacher.
Kim Miller, second grade.
Ashley Wallace, third grade.
Sean Gurus, literacy and math coach.
Oh, this is my son Evan.
Tammy Franklin, second grade.
Congratulations and great job. Appreciate everything you do. I just want to take a moment and discuss some items that have been brought up in concern in the community, so bear with me a little bit. I'd like to begin by announcing a few things about our staff, our students, and families. The spirit of cooperation that we have in the Austintown Schools is amazing. The opening of the new buildings, which I've mentioned already, the Awesome Town Celebration, which is a collaboration of community event now held on the Austintown Schools grounds, and our new dedication of the two new buildings. The amazing capacity that we had at our game two weeks ago, the Masson Game. You want to talk about community support and coming out and supporting our athletes. What an amazing feat and a great victory, obviously, and to all our athletes what they've done. When you seen how many students were at the AMS Red and Blue Game was amazing because of the, that night, it probably rained for the whole game, but our students and fans still came out, and that's dedication and commitment. Behind the scenes are so many great things going on, and I would like to share a few things. Outside of having the newest facilities in the area, we continue to lead in the ways of innovation of student-centered learning. There has been some recent discussion around textbooks. Over the past several years, Ohio districts have been discouraged by the Ohio Department of Education and several state superintendents for purchasing textbooks. And the main reason behind that is, one, textbooks are outdated as soon as they're printed. The Ohio Common Core is changing, has changed, and that's in place now, but also, how we educate our children continually change, and textbooks can't keep up with that. And one of the things, I see a group of students, I'm here from the Latin Club, and I believe one of the students are going to talk, and one of the things we've done is we've moved some of our curriculum to be online curriculum. And we're just exploring that to see how it's going, and we're having good experiences at some levels, and some experiences that we know we need to make a change. But that's the great thing about online technology. We're able to make the change. If we go and spend, the last time we bought textbooks in a district was K-5 for Math Investigation, it was $290,000. If we chose we didn't like that material then, we can't just return $290,000 worth of textbooks. But if we choose that we don't like an online curriculum, we can go and choose another online curriculum. So there's many advantages in looking at online curriculum. And we're not saying that we're not going to purchase textbooks, but our way to just go and say we're going to buy textbooks for every level is something that we are discouraged to do by the State Department of Education, and we need to take it by grade level by grade level, class by class. Many things are happening at the high school that many people don't know about. We have deployed new teaching resources for math at the middle school and new college-level textbooks at the high school. We've invested in dual credit. That is something we partner with YSU, where our teachers are becoming adjunct professors. They go down to YSU and get trained. Our children have an opportunity to take a college course, get a high school credit, and a college course at the same time. That is something we've really invested a lot of time in. Want to give Mr. McGlynn credit for doing that. He's been the innovator in the past in our area for leading that charge. YSU really does look at Austintown and works extensively with Austintown, and now that has been branched out to other districts in the county, but we have been the leaders in that, and that directly goes back to Mr. McGlynn. And it's something that's a benefit to our students. For those parents that know the rising cost of college or starting to look at college, it's become very expensive, unfortunately, for students to go to college. But if you can come to high school and get eight, 10, 16 credits for college, that will really benefit you, obviously, for your college credit, but also for your family financially. The Austintown Schools is leading the way, offering the most college and high school dual credit courses in the region. An excellent offering of AP courses at the high school level, the only self-contained STEM program in the area. We started seventh grade two years ago, we moved it to eighth grade this year. We have seventh and eighth grade self-contained STEM at our middle school. They're using an online program to teach instruction of children. That is called Schoology. That is, again, another pilot we're looking at. And another interesting piece that we've done with those children is we're offering Mandarin Chinese. So one of the things we want to look at in the Austintown Schools is providing more opportunities for children to have choices in foreign languages. One of our board members, Mr. Schnerrenberger, pointed out to me many years ago, and I may get the statistic wrong, but at some point when Austintown was founded, over 50% of the residents were German. And that's something that we want to look at, providing that opportunity for our kids to be able to take German. So those are things that we're looking at. And also, we used to teach Italian in the Austintown Schools. So is there a way we can provide a tie-in? Not to, you know, when you look at filling a classroom with a full teacher schedule, we may not have enough students to fill that classroom. But is there another way to use a teacher that we have in the building, like we're doing with Latin, and finding a different means of way to present the curriculum? And that's what we're looking at. In addition to making the great programs happen, our teaching and administrative staff have been implementing new standards and new evaluation system, and are preparing students for the next generation of assessments. And that has all come down in the last two years. And as I walked the buildings, last Wednesday, I believe it was late start, and seeing the hard work that the teachers were doing, but also the anxiety on their faces, I felt for them. Actually, Dave and I spent some time with several other of the elementary teachers, talking to a staff member because it brought her to tears. There is so much change that has happened on our staff, and there's so much pressure now on teachers. Again, regardless if you believe in it, don't believe in it, good or bad, it's reality for our staff, and we have to find ways to support them. And that's why we've spent so much time in professional development. I've had very little calls on delayed starts and our waiver days, but to assure you, they are used very wisely, and the time is not enough time, to be honest, of all the things that we have to do. So our staff has to spend time after work with Mr. Malane or other building principals to make sure all of the restraints or constraints that the state has put on us is met. I believe by the end of this month, all of our student learning outcomes have to be completed by our teaching staff. I've also had some discussions about open enrollment. Open enrollment was implemented in 2008 in order to ensure the financial stability of the district. We are currently continuing to work hard in effective operations of open enrollment, and we'll make this week, or we'll be meeting this week to discuss next year's program. That's one thing we've done with open enrollment every year. We've had a group of teachers, administrators get together and look at what the procedures would be for open enrollment. It is not something that we have a lot of leeway in. There's state law, actually, the State Superintendent is putting out guidelines on open enrollment. Actually, I read, we'll be at the end of the month, or end of November, guidelines will be coming out about the procedures of open enrollment. Right now, there's state law that we have to follow. There are never any guidelines, but it's something we've looked at. One of the things I can assure the community, since we've been an open enrollment district, we've not come back to the taxpayers for new money. We've remained in the black. We've watched what we spend, but we also were able to reward our teachers with raises, I believe, last year or this year currently we're in. And last year was the first raises we had on the base salary in over five years. Something our teachers deserved. And there's 82 districts in the state of Ohio that are open enrollment districts. We are basically just playing the game that the state lets us play. And the other piece to that is we are also providing a high-quality education for children that want to be educated. We're continuing to work, I already covered that. Home room averages in the K through five grade are less than 24 students in a class, and six through eight classrooms average less than 26 students a class. Open enrollment only accounts for 10% of our student population in the traditional classroom. Unfortunately, school districts occasionally have to deal with accidents. I'm going to transfer over to transportation. On October 4th, one of our buses, carrying two children, one Aiden and a driver, went off the road on New Road. There was a rapid response from Transportation Director Ms. Colleen Murphy, Director of 21st Century Learning, Mr. Mario Sulli, who were quickly on the scene with the first responders. Fortunately for us and the children on that bus, there was no one was injured that had a major injury. The bus was only traveling 29 miles an hour. We were able to look at our GPS system that we have to see what the bus driver was going over speed. I believe that road is 35 miles an hour. He was only going 29 miles an hour. And we came out of that situation very fortunate. That could have been a major accident. If you recall, geez, my memory could be off a little bit, but I believe about four to five years ago, we had a driver have a heart attack that ran off the road, and thank God, none of those children were majorly hurt. Unfortunately, that driver did pass away. So we have accidents, and when we're transporting over 3,000 students a day, we feel that student safety is the number one thing. And Ms. Murphy's going to talk to you a little bit about all the things in transportation that they've done to ensure student safety. One report that I was very proud of and I shared with the Board, last year, we had over 20 drivers, 20 new drivers last year. And every year, we review our insurance policy. Underneath our liability insurance is our transportation insurance, our vehicle insurance. We did not have one claim that was against the Austintown Schools last year on our insurance policy. We did have one accident last year, and that was when a bus was hit on Mahoney Avenue by another vehicle. So accidents do happen, and I can assure the community and the staff and all the parents that we have a great transportation department that is one of the leaders in the northeastern Ohio and in the Mahoney Valley, and Ms. Murphy's going to talk about some of the things we do for the Valley. One of the things with the accident on New Road, as soon as I got on scene, I was back here in the afternoon. I called the Mahoney County Engineer, because I went out on the site, and if you've not driven on that road, that is a very narrow road. I asked the Mahoney County Engineer to meet me out on the site. It did take two days from the meet me there. He was out of the office on the day I called him and the day after. We went out to the site, and that was about at, I believe, about 1:30. And by 5 o'clock, I had a staff member drive by and call me and say that they're dropping off equipment, and the next day, that road was being repaired. Not putting blame on where the road was, if the road was faulty. Obviously, as a driver, you have to be cognizant of any type of road hazards, but it is something that was addressed, and we reached out to the people in charge to make sure it was addressed. I want to thank Ms. Murphy for all the professionalism that she provides at that office and the leadership. Last, there's been a lot of comments and questions about school lunch. I've been around the district and have eaten lunch in our cafeterias over 10 times in the last two weeks. I won't call myself a very picky eater, but I am one that doesn't eat everything. And I found the mills to be filling and not have any taste issues. I actually felt that the mills were very good. I praise our cafeteria staff. I am one, as a high school student, that worked in the cafeteria. My family members come from a long history of working in restaurants. My grandmother actually owned a pizza store in Youngstown back in the 40s and 50s. And look at my belly, I do eat a little bit too much sometimes. But I think one of the major changes, and students and parents all need to understand with food service, there are many restraints that we're under, and I believe they're good restraints. I served on the Nutrition Committee six years ago, it was the second year in this district. One of the things we talked about in Nutrition Committee was to do away with French fries at Fitch, because French fries, every day, is not healthy for you. Eventually, we removed those from Fitch. We're providing healthier foods. We're not saying as a school district that you should never eat French fries. That's a family choice. That's something you can do at home. You can drive through McDonald's. But as a school system, we need to represent what good eating habits are, and we do that in our cafeteria system. So I want to praise Mrs. Brooks. Today, I had an opportunity to go to the Cleveland Browns Stadium with Ms. Brooks, Ms. Michelle Porter, our sixth grade teacher at AMS, and two students, one from Fitch and one from AMS. And they presented on a grant that they received for Freddy's Fuel Up and Go Kart at AMS that we serve students in between breakfast and lunch. Students have a choice to go out and get healthy items. And we got to go and present today to the Cleveland Browns. So there are many good things going on in our cafeteria, and I understand that it may not be exactly what our students want to eat, and there's always choices, but it's something that we need as a district to emphasize the healthy choice, and that's what we do. It is my privilege to serve the Austintown Communion District, most importantly, our students. That's why we are here. That's why I come to work every day. And there are many decisions that I make that a lot of people don't like. And I was taught by a great leader that if you make every decision based on what's best for kids, the children will be okay, and the adults sometimes just got to live with that decision. And I assure you, that's what we do every day in the Austintown Schools. If you ever need me, please call my office. I have an open door policy. You're more than welcome to stop in and talk about any issues you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kalouka. And now, we will call upon our Transportation Supervisor, Colleen Murphy.
Good evening. I am Colleen Murphy, I'm the Director of Transportation Services for the Austintown Local Schools, and I am also the Northeast Director of the Ohio Association of Pupil Transportation. Nationwide, there are 450,000 school buses transporting nearly 24 million children over 4 billion miles each day, with less than nine fatalities nationwide. Unfortunately, there have been 800 school-aged children killed in personal vehicle crashes during normal school hours. Austintown is currently transporting 3,000 students, traveling 1,553 miles using 46 buses. Fortunately, here in Austintown, there has not been a school bus fatality since 1968. So truly, the school bus is the safest mode of transportation nationwide. I have a few facts for you. In 2007, we traveled 2,702 miles a day in comparison to our 1,553 miles we're traveling daily now. That's a reduction of 1,149 miles a day, and if you add that up, that's 204,522 miles annually. It's huge. During the first 10 days of school this year, each driver in our fleet spent 30 minutes with their kindergarten through 5th grade students reviewing bus safety rules and emergency evacuations. This was done this year on September 13th. We also practice evacuations on every two-hour delayed day with our kindergarten through 12th grade students. This year, at the Austintown and Grand Opening Celebration on October 7th, we had many drivers volunteer their Sunday for bus safety event. We demonstrated the danger zone all around the bus and explained to parents and children why you must always be at your bus stop prior to the bus arriving and never chase after your bus because that is very dangerous. We also answered questions and reviewed other bus safety rules like sitting properly and using your inside voice so the driver can hear emergency vehicles. We were excited to share with the community to come see what we see. Parents and children were able to sit in the driver's seat and actually see what we, what the driver sees and the driver's perspective. As parents, you can relax and be assured that you are putting your child in the hands of a highly-trained professional who cares about your child. There is not a driver, a mechanic, or paraprofessional, I'm sorry, in this department that would operate or allow your child to ride under unsafe conditions. In fact, each of us must pass an extensive commercial driver's license program, has received a qualifying state and federal background check, we are randomly tested for drugs and alcohol, we receive a thorough medical examination at least once a year, and we are immediately disqualified if any significant medical problem is identified. Drivers are evaluated and critiqued by a trained observer while performing duties, and we immediately disquali, and are immediately disqualified if they perform below expectations. Our motor vehicle records are reviewed at least twice a year, we are certified in CPR, and we are required to attend four hours of in-service training prior to the start of each school year. In fact, Austintown leads all of Northeast Ohio in in-service and training. We provide opportunities here in Austintown each year for mechanics, for drivers, and for supervisors for 10 different counties in Ohio. This year, we had 56 mechanics attend our workshop in June, and 449 drivers attend our annual four-hour in-service in August. Each, each year, those numbers have just grown as we continue to strive to provide the most up-to-date training in the transportation industry. This week is National School Bus Safety Week. Drivers will be reviewing the rules with their children, the rules that keep them safe while they're walking to their bus stop, riding the bus, and returning home again at the end of the day. The Ohio State Highway Patrol has followed several of our buses on Monday, October 21st, and today, Tuesday, October 22nd, checking for red light violations and unsafe procedures. I'm proud to say, none were reported. Our transportation professionals strive to provide a safe and pleasant environment for our children. We ask you to take a moment to review the bus rules and proper behavior with your children to reinforce safety while, while they're being transported to and from school.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. At this time, we'll move to public comments. We do have a number of folks here tonight that have signed up for public comments, so I would ask that we adhere to the three-minute time period to speak, and if you would come to the podium when your name is called and state your name and your address.
Good evening, I'm Amy Sobko. First of all, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak this evening, and I also would like to start out by commending our staff. Both of my children are now at the same school, thank God, it's been a little bit easier having them at the same school instead of two different ones, but I just feel that I need to say thank you to all staff from janitorial, all the work to the principals. Thank you for all that you are doing for our students, I greatly appreciate it. I did leave two contact phone numbers. My first question to you this evening is, we have, unsure of the exact number, but you said roughly 10% of our students are open enrollment. However, they don't have the right to come and speak on behalf of their families and their children, and I'd like to know why? If they're allowed in our district, they're allowed to learn, why can't they have a voice here tonight or at any of our Board of Education meetings? So if you could get back to me on some of these, I'd appreciate it.[1115.25][1115.25][applause]
I don't, I don't usually interrupt, Amy, but if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, the board policy on that has been changed, and you can be an open enroll student and come.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I wasn't aware that it was changed.
Yeah, I'm sorry for interrupting.
No, that's fine, I appreciate that. Secondly, I understand, especially with the new buildings, everything's a little bit confusing, and, you know, everybody's trying to do their best that they can. However, if we can have deans of this and that and everything else, why does the district not have enough money to make sure that poor Mrs. Case, our district nurse, is overloaded? She has to try to figure out how to be in four buildings at one time to administer all the medication. Why can't we find some way, write a grant or something to have a nurse at each building at all times? And thirdly, this is going to be more of a concern, actually, it is starting to get cold. I'm a flip-flop girl, so I'm in tennis shoes today, so you know it's cold. But our students are coming back and forth between the schools over and over. For gym class, you know, for this and that, you know, for their specials, why does the elementary students have to go to the intermediate? Why does intermediate have to come over here? We built these beautiful new buildings that should have the capacity for the students, for the specials that we need, and having 300 or 400 kids in one gym class is just outrageous. And actually, right here on the public comments, it does say, speakers must sign in and be Austintown residents, so if you are changing that rule, make sure you change your agendas. Just wanted to point that out. Thank you for your time.[1240.16][1240.16][applause]
Thank you, Amy. Next, we have Paul Proctor.
I'm Paul Proctor. First, I want to say thank you for letting me speak. I have a, like a small speech prepared. Mr. Kalouka, members of the board, I am speaking tonight for the students, for all the students getting bullied in our schools every day. We say we have a zero tolerance for bullying, but that's just not true. How many of our teachers and staffs are actually trained to spot, intervene, and stop bullying? I've heard kids complain that no one listens to them, their reports of being bullied are ignored, swept under the rug, pushed aside. So I ask you, how is that solving the problem? So you're heavy or thin, or you're white or black, Asian or Milano, handicapped or slow, straight A student, or barely making the grade? What gives the bully the right to bully? I'll tell you what gives them the right. It's our school system, our teachers and staffs who are untrained, unwilling, and not committed. I was taunted every day in 6th grade for months. No one did anything about it until I stood up and did something to change it myself. My little sister was also bullied in 1st grade. It took over a month to stop it, and not once was a parent ever called into the situation. This incident was never recorded, never reported according to the website. How many other incidents were never reported to make it look like we have a hold of what's going on inside our school? For every action, there is an equal and just reaction. Those who bully need to be held accountable for their actions. I propose we take a stand against bullying, a strong and committed stand. I propose a stronger anti-bullying policy that will protect those being bullied. These kids' lives are unfairly being changed every day. They're leaving school, calling off, skipping school, feeling alone and helpless, thinking that no one cares. Lives are being changed every day. We need to band together and stop it now. Will it take the parents filing lawsuits against our district, pulling their kids out of the schools, or a kid ending their life because of some, before someone opens their eyes and takes notice? Our school system is not bully-free. We do not have a zero tolerance for bullying. Take down the signs and stand up and make it real. You have an obligation to allow them a harassment-free education, all of us. Make bullies accountable, make parents accountable, teach tolerance and empathy. Stop treating some of these bullies as if they're gods who walk on the red carpet when they enter the schools. Teach them that it will not be tolerated and that their freedom of speech ends when they're disturbingly interrupting within other students' rights to a bully-free zone. Segregation in the lunchrooms. We're all middle-school kids. Our schools want to force us to be like robotic adults, yet you treat us like children in the lunchroom. This also affects the kids who are being bullied. So instead of sitting with people who are comfortable with, we're sitting at the, we're sitting them at tables with the very person or group of people who are bullying them. Would you rather eat a sandwich with someone calling you a [BLEEP] or the people who tell you and let you believe that you're just as good as everyone else? 90% of 4th through 8th graders report being bullied across America. One out of every 10 students drop out because of bullying. Harassment and bullying have been linked to 75% of school shooting incidents. Suicide rates between 10- and 14-year-olds has grown over more than 50% in the last three decades due to bullying. Stop saying that we won't tolerate and start proving it. We need to make a committed stand against bullying. You could be saving the life of a child you have an obligation to protect.
Paul, thank you. I do see that you have a phone number here to be contacted. Next, we would ask Hannah Proctor to come up.[1511.04][1511.04][laughter]
Put her on the side, Doc. Yeah, let's put her paper there to read.
I'm Hannah Proctor. Good evening, Mr. Kalouka and board members. My name is Hannah, and I am a student at AES. I am in 2nd grade. Although I love my teacher, I want to be homeschooled because the new school is too much for little kids. I have been having anxiety problems since school has started. It's not fair to treat little children like big kids. You put us in a big school with too many kids. I love school, but I don't want to be there anymore. I miss Mr. Rice and Mr. Kelty. They know how to make kids smile, laugh, and feel happy. I want to feel the same way, but school does not feel good anymore. Thank you for listening, and thank you, Mr. Porter, for letting me know my thoughts are
And thank you also, Hannah. And I see that you have left a number here to be contacted, or your parents.
My name is David Daichant. On October 4th, the Director of Transportation was cited by the High Ohio Patrol for transporting students in an unsafe manner due to overcrowding on the bus. As if that weren't bad enough, the truly disturbing events surrounding this incident are what happened and didn't happen following this incident. In a well-run school district, after an incident such as this, logic dictates that an internal investigation take place to determine whether this was an isolated incident or a chronic situation that needs to be addressed. If the latter, suggestions would be presented for possible solutions to the problem, action would be taken to correct it, and follow-up would be performed to confirm resolution. Through requests for public information, I requested all reports, communications, including emails, and any other documentation related to this incident. The district is legally mandated by the Ohio Sunshine laws to provide this information. If more documentation exists, I didn't receive it, and Mary Ann Herschel broke the law. Apparently, I got everything. Based on what I received, the following is what happened regarding the above incident. The Transportation Director wrote an email to the Superintendent essentially stating, quote, "It is impossible to determine who is riding when I put these routes together. I also continue to repair bad data due to poor communication between departments, and the State Highway Patrol has blown this completely out of proportion," end quote. And then, that's it. Nothing else was done. The Superintendent did not reply questioning what the plan was to resolve the routing and data issues. The Board of Education did not direct the Superintendent to investigate this incident and resolve any issues that were discovered. The issue was completely dropped internally, and nothing was done after the primary law enforcement agency in the state of Ohio told Austintown Local School District in no uncertain terms that we have some safety issues that need to be addressed. The Superintendent told the press something to the effect of, "The capacity of the school bus was not exceeded." The problem with that is, the citation was not for exceeding the capacity of the school bus. Citation was issued because the kids were seated three to a seat, and they were too big to fit behind the seat-back barriers in front of them. If the bus had an accident or had to stop suddenly, those kids, essentially sitting in the aisles, would have become projectiles, causing serious injury. After this incident, I spoke to Lieutenant Hill from the OHP. He told me right off the bat that he didn't like citing the school district, but the situation was serious enough that he thought it was necessary. He also told me that during his interview with the Transportation Director, she told him that there have been very few parent complaints regarding safety issues with the Austintown Local School District busing system. He was very surprised and interested to learn that for the past year, there has been a website and a Facebook group with over 340 members devoted to trying to resolve the many safety complaints that parents had first contacted the Transportation Department about, but had been unsuccessful getting resolution to. The charges were subsequently dropped, not because the parties were innocent, but because of a procedural technicality whereby OHP should have prior notified the school district that they intended to stop the bus. Parents are telling me the overcrowding and these violations are still going on, mostly in the morning, because many kids stay after school for activities and don't ride the bus home. The most significant problem with this whole episode, and with all the other safety issues brought before the Board of Education Administration for the past year, is where is the oversight? The current Board of Education is intimately aware of the practices and tactics of this Superintendent and his Transportation Director, and they have done nothing to investigate this issue. This is not the behavior we expect or deserve from our elected officials. With the exception of Mr. Porter, the current Board of Education does not act in the best interest of the people of Austintown, and should be replaced by members who have genuine public service and the welfare of our children as their highest priority. It's interesting to note that in their remarks at the PTA Candidate Forum last night, most of the candidates clearly mentioned this and other student safety issues as a top priority, and most gave specific details regarding improvements that were needed. Mrs. Mock and Mr. Schirrenberger didn't even mention it. How can everyone else so clearly recognize such a serious problem, and their current Board majority not even acknowledge it as an issue? The status quo is not working in Austintown. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Next, we have Jennifer Ruiz.
Thank you for the opportunity. I have to hide my notes in my phone, otherwise my toddler will turn them into a coloring book. I was also fortunate with David to attend the Candidates Night last evening. It was very enlightening. Current Board members had no trouble taking off a list of accomplishments a mile long. Unfortunately, none of those, or very few of those accomplishments, were actually, took place here in our district. Resumes were written off, husbands' resumes were read off, but I didn't hear anything about, "I did this for our students, and I'm proud of it." You know, it just, it speaks volumes to me about the priorities of this Board. Parents have addressed you endlessly about the bus safety issues and other safety issues with lack of crossing guards and such. Those have fallen on deaf ears, unfortunately, repeatedly. I've spoken to you, Mr. Cala-Luka, personally, and my complaints were, and my issues were just dropped by the wayside. So I speak from my heart when I say that I feel that this Board has failed our students. You're going to hear from a few more, and Paul and Hannah, you guys are awesome. You're going to hear from a few more students also, and I just beg of you to not let their issues and their concerns also fall by the wayside. They may seem trivial to you, these issues, but they're in the hearts of our children. They live them every day. So I ask of you to give them the respect that they deserve and actually do something for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Francisca Perez.
Hello, thank you for letting me speak here. My name is Francisca Perez. We have come today, as current and former language students, to bring to light the detrimental consequences that have and will continue to come from a decision made earlier this year, the eradication of the Latin program. So we ask that you please sit aside of your phones and listen as I express only a few of the irrefutable facts and benefits centered in the Latin language. Did you know the five Romance languages, Spanish, French, Italian, Portuguese, and Romanian, all derived from Latin? Also, not only does English grammar closely mimic Latin grammar, but over 70% of our vocabulary derives from Latin. In addition, according to the National Review, quote, "The best grounding for education is Latin grammar." I say this not because Latin is traditional and medieval, but simply because even rudimentary knowledge of Latin cuts down the labor and pains of almost any other subject by at least 50%, end quote. Aside from taking Latin at FISH, I also take German, along with three other students in my class that have at least taken Latin one. We all can agree that having this Latin background has significantly aided our learning of German. Personally, for me, it made it virtually effortless. In the three years I have taken Latin, I have noticed a common trend. I look around the classroom, and it is filled with your AP Honors and College Prep students, your future lawyers, scientists, doctors, and teachers. These academically-focused students see how Latin will strengthen their educational goals. So why is such a disservice being done for them? What possible explanation can be enough to justify this? Personally, there isn't one. The goal for our schools have always been to foster an academically-focused culture, so why cut a fundamental educational program such as the Latin language? Once you have studied Latin, its influence in the world around you becomes evident. For example, the Roman Pantheon has influenced Western culture for over 2,000 years. Our very own White House was modeled after the Pantheon itself. Take out a quarter, examine it. In 1782, Charles Thompson decided the model for the seal of the United States would be in Latin, e pluribus unum. How many people here are familiar with common-spoken Latin phrases such as vice versa, pro bono, et cetera, or carpe diem? We cannot ignore the reality that Latin is deeply ingrained in our culture. As Cicero once said, quote, "Not to know what happened before you were born is to be a child forever," end quote. Now I want to make this next point very clear. I am currently a senior, so whether or not the Latin program continues, it will have no direct effect on me academically. However, psychologically, it will, because simply the thought that students to come will not have the same golden opportunity that were given to us worries and sickens me, that they will not have that opportunity that opened their eyes to this exciting culture that from it we harvested the passion to come here today. Because we don't only come here as language students, but also as mighty Roman warriors, as Caesars and Ciceros, Augustuses and Ovids, fighting for a cause that lives on with vitality in our hearts. So for those that still say it is not needed, you probably haven't taken Latin. And for those who say it is dead, it is because you are killing it. And for everyone else, let them know, per nos, Latina vivit. Through us, Latin lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Francisca. The next speaker we would ask to come up would be Alana Ruiz. And is this Miranda with you? Yes, Miranda Truslaw.
Hi, I'm Miranda Truslaw. Hi, I'm Miranda Truslaw, and I am in seventh grade at AMS. There are a lot of problems in my school, but one very important problem that I have experienced myself is the overcrowding of my bus and how it was handled. Since the first day of school, our bus had an unsafe amount of kids, and people had been complaining about it, but nobody was listening. None of the complaints were addressed. They were pushed under the jug because nobody wanted to deal with it. It took till two weeks ago for a patrol officer to pull our bus over and take people off our bus. There are still other kids with overcrowding and other problems on their bus. These problems need to be dealt with. We need to know what is going on in our school and take care of the problems. So I hope we can all work together to find solutions for these problems at our school. Thank you.
My name is Alana Ruiz, and... Bullying is a big problem at our school. No one tells the teachers, because whenever they try to talk, nobody ever listens. Nobody wants to address the problem, because everyone always says that our school is bully-free, and nobody wants to prove it.
Thank you, Alana, and thank you, Miranda. At this time, we'll move from public comments to a presentation on the district website with Dave Mulain, Director of Instruction.
Good evening. I'd like to actually begin by speaking to Paul up here. As a teacher and a father, it deeply saddens me to learn tonight that actions that I may have taken years ago on Paul's behalf did not have the impact that I expected. As many of you know, bullying is something that I worked very hard to address. It's a very personal issue to me, and I'd like to personally extend Paul my apologies for anything that I may have done to fail you. Paul, I extend you and your family an opportunity to meet with me to brainstorm new ways that we can solve this problem together. I'd also like to invite Paul to join us in March. We have a safety committee, which I'll talk about tonight, and I think with your passion and what you said tonight, you should be a student delegate to that committee and help us review our policies to make sure that we have students in mind. Some things that I've been working on for the last eight months. Firstly, we formed a safety committee, and we reviewed district bullying policies. And we've done a lot of good work as a committee. We've revamped the district radio communication system, added a visitor screening system called Raptor at all of our buildings, which I'm sure some of you have run into. We've placed police officers in all of our buildings, redesigned entryways to ensure that visitors have to be buzzed into our buildings to keep our students safe. And recently, we've been working on something the Attorney General released over the summer, which was a template for us to follow in the creation of our safety plans. So I'm pleased to tell you tonight, after about five months of work, on Monday, our safety committee will review this 95-page safety plan that's aligned to the Attorney General's template, and it's completely aligned to federal emergency management standards, and it's pretty impressive, but a very boring read, I might add. On top of that, we've had active shooter training for our staff in May, drafted some new communications protocols for internal communications with Michelle Mercer, and we've created and distributed emergency crisis action cards to our teachers to help them respond quicker in an emergency. No teacher can read something like this in an emergency and know what to do. Lastly, one of the things that we're waiting for to submit this plan for our Board to approve is our state requires a new template for our floor plans. So now that the buildings are finalized, our architects are working on new floor plans to go into the safety plan. Another project I've been working on with a girl named Kendra Corpie, who works with us in Channel 19, is a new district website, which will probably be launched next week. And this is part of a bigger communications plan that we put together back in February. And just like everything else, there's phases to the plan, and we're working through those phases to improve district communications. We know that our website was number one, so that's what we spent our time working on over the last four to five months. And just to give you a preview tonight, I'm not going to show you everything, because that would take another few hours. But as you can see, one of the biggest things we want to do is engage in getting student work and photography on the site to showcase what we're really proud of in this district, which is our students. Also, a big thing for our Board was a central calendar of events. So what you're going to see here eventually is, all the different events that are going on in the district will be present on this calendar. And as a community member or a parent, at the bottom of the site, I don't know if you can see this behind the table, but you'll be able to subscribe to RSS feeds and choose the calendars that you have integrated to your mobile devices. So I think that's a great feature. Most importantly, though, at the top here, what we really tried to do was be clear about who we are and how to get a hold of us. So under the departments links, you'll find, for every department in the district, contact information, important documents, and a way to get a hold of us. Board of Education, you'll find information about the Board members, how to contact them, Board meeting notices, Board agendas, and other Board documents. Now this, I think, is really going to be helpful. We created student, parent, and staff menu headers. And what you're going to see under Students are some of the things that we talked about tonight. Information so that when a student goes on the website, they know where to find that bullying report form that they can fill out and turn in. A staff directory, I'm going to actually click on this, because this is going to be a great thing for our district if it opens with the Wi-Fi here. All right, we're going to forego that. I seem to be froze up on this page. Oh, here we go. So my favorite thing about the site is, you're now going to have a staff directory. Any employee in the district, you'll be able to look them up by last name, and in many cases, find their email address, administrative people, guidance people, office people, how to get a hold of, their phone number. And that's just going to really improve that communication and give you that opportunity to contact people directly. Some other great features that are included in Alumni Portal. So when you click on Alumni Portal right now, we only have one registered alumni, that's me. But once we launch the website, hopefully many of you get engaged in registering in the Alumni Portal. You do it by the year you graduated. We'll have reunion announcements, we'll have reunion pictures. And what's great about this is it gives us another method of communicating to a group of our stakeholders in the community. We've never had that information before. So yes, it's going to help alumni get organized, but it's also going to help us communicate with alumni when we have great projects going on in the district, like what these young men did for us with the Veterans Memorial. Also over here, I think this is pretty neat here, is a e-communications signup. So as you already know, on OneCall, you can opt out at the end of the OneCall if you don't want to get those messages. I know not all of you like getting phone calls, don't like OneCall necessarily. This is an alternative. You can subscribe to receive those notices through email or text message. And you'll also be able to subscribe, which ones do you want? Do you want just the district? Maybe you have children in one building, you only need one building's messages. So this is really going to revolutionize the way that we communicate together. Most importantly, when you go to our school pages, we're going to add tons of content that pertains to the students. And this is a shell right now for Fitch High School. What we'd like to do is, once we get this launched, start to meet with our students, our student groups. Ask them what kind of content they want on the website. What improvements can we put on there to help them be better engaged in the school? And one of my favorite things about Austintown right now, if you read the Maslin Game, our high school students and their school pride is unlike any other group of students that I've seen, both as a student at Fitch High School for four years, and this is my fourth year in the district as an administrator. I am so proud of that, and I hope the community is too, and hopefully the website's another forum to create more engagement in those kinds of activities. So I thank our students for that. I thank you for your time this evening. Thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome to Austintown Elementary School. We're very, very proud that we're hosting the board meeting for tonight. Before I begin, some of my building reports, certainly I want to congratulate the class of 1962. I would also like to commend Lynn Kirk Elementary for being a school of promise. I worked with some of those teachers at both Frank Olle and at Davis Elementary School and had the pleasure to hire one of those people, and many of them are members of our faculty here. I do want to commend Hannah Proctor. I've done this for a long time, nearly 30 years, and I've never had the opportunity to hear a second-grade child speak so eloquently and profoundly and politely to a group of people, and it's not easy to be up here in front of an audience, and I think she deserves a round of applause. She's a brilliant little girl because Mr. Rice and Mr. Kelty are outstanding administrators, and I understand that you miss Woodside. We miss our old buildings, but it is our charge to bring this community together into this new building, into this new facility, and we're going to do that for you. We're 34 days into the school year. We're continuing to build a great building here, and with that, I'll lead into how we're doing that. First of all, on September the 21st, we officially became a bucket filler school. This is a character program that all of our boys and girls participated in about learning how to make great decisions, about how to be a bucket filler and not a bucket dipper, and it's a great anti-bullying program. All the boys and girls were doing that. Certainly, we are large. We have 48 classrooms here, but we have great learning opportunities going inside in the classroom, but to demonstrate how we're also emulating what we used to do in our other little satellite buildings, we're focusing on all those opportunities that we used to have in our other buildings. For example, the field trips that we have. Our kindergarten students recently visited White House Fruit Farm for their harvest activities. Our first-grade students today and previous to today and Thursday visited Mill Creek Metro Parks for two programs, a Forest Friends and a Ford Nature Center, and a milling around program at Lannerman's Mill. Our second-grade students also soon will visit Mill Creek Park in November to participate in a Lannerman's Mill Gorge Walk. And our first and second-grade students are also going to be visiting Dior Auditorium in December for the annual holiday program that's presented by Easy Street Productions. These are all things that we are doing in our other schools that, again, we're merging into this building. And it is a big task because we're moving a lot of kids, but it's happening, and that culture is also being made here. At this point, we're completing our only school-sponsored fundraiser. We sold magazines and cookie dough. We would like to thank any of the people that supported that. It is our only fundraiser. On Friday, October the 25th, at 2:00, we will have our first PTA room party in this new building. And just to tell you how it's different, we will have 150 PTA volunteers here contributing to that room party to make successful experiences and memories for our boys and girls. Finally, I have to give a huge thank you and a shout-out to our Austintown Elementary School PTA for their assistance with opening our new school. They were invaluable in helping us, being here in the morning to help guide boys and girls from the buses into the breakfast room, through the hallways, into their classrooms. They were here to help with bus dismissal and departure, and if it weren't for the outstanding volunteerism of the community, of our volunteers, our PTA members helping, we wouldn't have gotten this building open to the point where it is today. So I want to end with a big shout-out to the PTA. Thank you, and again, welcome you to our beautiful building.
Thank you, Mr. Linton, and also thank you for hosting this month's board meeting. Next, we would ask Angel Owens to come forward from the intermediate school.
Good evening, everyone. We just want to start off by saying we really want to thank our PTA parents and volunteers. Last Thursday night was our first Falcon Fun Night at the school. It was a fabulous event. I know we had people on the stage, and baskets, and raffles, and kids, and pizza, and all that kind of good stuff, and it really turned out to be one of our better events that we hope to continue on and build a tradition of having every year. Also, we want to thank everyone who helped out with Austintown. I know in our building, in the cafeterium, we had a wonderful, I hope everybody got a chance to come, a wonderful farmer's market that Ms. Tassenbrooks put together. I know I spent a good deal of money in there. Officer Toth also had children's fingerprinting and that going on. Ms. Case did free blood pressure screening as well, and it was just, it was very nice to have people come through the building. We had some teachers in there as well, and they said they received a lot of positive comments from everyone, so that was another excellent event. PTA Services Campaign has kicked off in the building. We've had Hawaiian Shirt Day. You should have seen Mr. Suave with his full-out garb on. Pajama Days are on Thursdays. Today was Silly Sock Day, so that's going very well. PTA is going to be hosting Halloween Movie Day also next Friday, November 1st. The kids are looking forward to that. We again completed another successful magazine fundraiser. I know the kids are loving the monkeys this year on the lanyards. Picture Day, we weren't sure how that was going to go with all the students in the building. It went ahead of schedule. It ran very, very well. We've got third graders going to the Akron Zoo this week, and we have fourth-grade students going to Oh Wow Children's Museum and the Butler Art Museum, and we recently finished up third-grade OAA diagnostic testing, so all is well at AIS, so thank you.
Thank you, Angel. And from AMS, Jim Pank.
Good evening. I'd like to thank AES for hosting tonight's board meeting. AES, where we're learning to fill buckets and not dip in buckets, and I'm just learning or trying not to kick the bucket, so I had to give you something there. Work with me here. Using star data, testing data, and our department tests that we have throughout the building, our teaching staff has pre-assessed all of our students in their individual classrooms, and now they are using that data to begin the implementation of the SLOs, which we talked so much about. And that, the due date on that, I know we talked about that earlier, or we heard about that earlier, the due date for all the SLOs for the teachers is the 25th, which is this week. So they're all starting to come in. The teachers are pretty excited about it. There is a lot of anxiety about it also, but as they complete their SLOs and start turning them in, start working with these different ideas and new restraints that we have, they're starting to come at ease in AMS. That's a good thing. Last Tuesday, Mr. Zokoli had a tailgate party for all of our sixth graders. He charged $3. They got pizza with that. They played games, and they were given a ticket to the football game, which was on Wednesday. And as that was mentioned earlier also, the red and blue football game from AMS was Wednesday. It was a great game. Before that, we had a pep rally for our seventh and eighth graders, and we'd like to thank Mr. Popino and the Fitch High School band, which sent over the drum line, and the drum line performed for us while we were coming in. They performed for us during the activities, during the pep rally. And then also like to thank Mr. Walsh, our seventh grade, one of our seventh-grade social studies teacher, who put a presentation together for the kids, and we put it up on a screen in the gym. It hosted both teams, red and blue. It popped her picture up. They introduced themselves, just like you see on Monday Night Football. The kids were really excited, it was something new. We had a great time, and then again, like we said, it was a rainy game, but we had some seriously great spirit throughout the day, and that whole week was a fun week, spirit-wise for AMS. Finally, our AMS PTA Craft Show, the Annual Craft Show is coming up November 9th, so please mark your calendars. It starts at 10:00 a.m., goes till 4:00. Please come out and see everything that is offered. There's something for everyone, from food to crafts.
Thank you, Jim, and we'll conclude with the building reports, hearing from Tracy Harholz from the high school.
Always the last one to the party. Okay, hello and good evening to everyone. There are lots of exciting things happening at Fitch High School as well, but because the lens of education is so focused right now on 21st century skills, I thought we'd take a minute and talk about what our high school staff is doing to promote opportunities in a culture of collaboration, communication, critical thinking, and creativity for our students. The first example is the Turning Technologies Innovative Teacher Mini Grant that was recently awarded to three of our staff members, Steve Ward in the English Department, Seth Basista in STEM, and Gina Cardillo from ACTV. Turning Foundation sought applications from individuals and teams across the four county area who target innovative and creative practices focused on developing 21st century classrooms. And just this past Friday, I'm pleased to announce that Steve, Seth, and Gina's project was selected as one of only four award-winning entries. They will use their grant money to purchase iPads that are needed in order to bring their project vision to fruition for their students, so that's really awesome. Congratulations to them. Speaking of Gina Cardillo, anybody who knows or knows that she's quite a powerhouse, she's our TV production teacher and the general manager for ACTV. She's not happy with just one mini grant. She keeps going. Gina was also intrigued by the possibilities of Ohio's new $250 million Straight A grant. So thinking about the TV studio and how that really applies to all these 21st century skills and these four concepts, she contacted one of her friends named Joe Hollabaugh, who is the TV production teacher and the general manager at Boardman High School's TV studio, and they decided to partner up to write a proposal for the grant. Together, they reached out to Joe Nora, a familiar name around here, who is now the Struthers City Schools superintendent, and the three of them combined to create a sort of like a consortium among the three schools in addition to the Summit FM radio station, and the four then entities combined to create OSBN, which is called the Ohio Student Broadcast Network. That is an online student-produced network that allows students to experience the career path of digital media production without having to leave their home grounds. Barb Kleiner guided Gina and Joe through the writing of this grant, which they had less than a month to put together, so very, very hectic and frantic. If the $2 million is granted, then what it will do is establish the network. It will outfit both Austintown and Boardman Schools with new TV studio equipment, will equip Struthers Schools with new radio equipment, will provide IMAC labs for each school, fingers crossed, and a new production vehicle for each school. So the winners of that Straight A grant will be announced in December. Keep your fingers crossed. Finally, although we have lots of other good stuff going on too, we have a big event occurring on campus on October 31st. Austintown Fitch High School will be hosting a career trade fair for juniors and seniors. Our senior guidance counselor, Marie Dockery, this summer went to a presentation that was given by Mr. Don Crane, who is the president of the Western Reserve Building and Construction Trades Council, and she was inspired to put this whole event together. From there, she worked with Mr. Tony Di Tomaso of the Carpenter's Local 171, who helped her organize everything locally. So on the 31st, representatives from all 14 trades will be onsite with materials and testimonials to share with the students, and the goal there, of course, is to showcase the many post-secondary opportunities that we have available to our students, and also to recognize the importance of those trains to the very foundation of our community. We are very excited to host this event. Of course, we're extremely proud of our amazing staff, and obviously, our students rock.
Thank you, Tracy. That concludes our building reports, and we'll now move on to the regular agenda items. Do we have any amendments or changes to the agenda?
I would move that the agenda be approved with the addition of Item 13A. Approve recommendation to purchase a new Ford F-650 gas XLT dump truck from Allstate Ford for $74,940, replacing a 1978 International Harvester dump truck.
We have a motion on the floor. It has been moved and seconded. Treasurer, call the roll, please.
Dr. Stellers?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Dr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mr. Schnerrberger?
Yes, motion is approved. We will now move on to Item 5. Upon the recommendation of the treasurer, approve the regular session agenda for the Austintown Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, October 22nd, 2013. Second, we have a motion and a second. Treasurer, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Dr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mr. Schnerrberger?
Yes.
Dr. Stellers?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Item 6, Treasurer's Report. Upon the recommendation of the treasurer, approve the following items, A through E, for consent action by the Austintown Board of Education.
I so move.
We have a motion and a second. Treasurer, call the roll, please.
Dr. Stellers?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Dr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mr. Schnerrberger?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Item 7, Superintendent's Report. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the items A through E for consent action by the Austintown Board of Education.
So move.
Second, there's been a motion and a second. Treasurer, call the roll.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Dr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mr. Schnerrberger?
Yes.
Dr. Stellers?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Item has been approved. Now, that will take us, because this is a consent action item, over to page 7. So if you'd like to move to page 7 and pick up with item 8. Approve the recommendation to employ Tom Mock as a 2013-14 fall/winter event staff worker. Rate of pay will range from $10 to $100 per home game or event, depending on type and length of assignment. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Treasurer, call the roll, please.
Mr. Schnerrberger?
Yes.
Dr. Stellers?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Abstain.
Dr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Item 9, approve the recommendation to employ William Gonda as a part-time general music teacher at Austintown Intermediate School, effective 10/14/13, at 18/10 per hour, limited to two hours per day, five days per week. Second, we have a motion and a second. Treasurer, call the roll, please.
Dr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mr. Schnerrberger?
Yes.
Dr. Stellers?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Item 10, approve the recommendation to employ Jessica Emery and Sarah Ress as a Falcon Pride Online teachers. $120 per student, per two semester course, $60 per student enrolled in a one semester course, $50 one-time setup fee per semester for the 2013-2014 school year.
So move.
We have a motion and a second by Dr. Stellers. We have a motion and a second by Dr. Stellers. Treasurer, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Dr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mr. Schnerrberger?
Yes.
Dr. Stellers?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Item 11, approve the recommendation that the following OPEC employees receive limited or continuing contracts for which they are entitled, effective with the 2013-2014 school year.
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Treasurer, call the roll, please.
Dr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mr. Schnerrberger?
Yes.
Dr. Stellers?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Item 12, approve the recommendation to accept the school insurance proposal by Ohio Casualty, effective November 1st, 2013, to November 1st, 2014, in the amount of $155,820 for property, general liability, crime, inland marine, automobile, and umbrella coverage. This premium reflects a decrease of $5,431 from the 2012-2013 premium. I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Mr. Calloca, would you like to comment on this item?
Yes, we did two things for the Board of Education, and our taxpayers saved us money. One of the things we did was we took a one-month policy last week, or last month, to extend. Our policy's normally October to October. We took a one-month policy out for the whole month of October, with our outlined buildings still on those policies, and our two buildings rolling in. We wanted to make sure that our outlined buildings were tore down that we weren't going to use, and we did the evaluation, adjusted the property with our two new buildings in line, and that is one of the reasons why we had the savings. Normally, we would have an increase of 3% to 5%, but because of us collaborating our schools, this is an area where we really didn't think about us saving money in it. We didn't know if we would or not, but we knew we were able to save some money with the consolidation of schools in other areas. This is another area where we were able to save some money with consolidation.
Okay, great, thank you. Treasurer, call the roll, please.
Mr. Schnerrberger?
Yes.
Dr. Stellers?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Dr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Item 13, approve the recommendation to accept the preventative maintenance agreement for customized preventative maintenance service by the Western Reserve Mechanical for monthly professional preventative visits to include, but not limited to, testing and inspection, predictive maintenance tasks, coil cleaning and lubrication at Fitch, AMS Early Learning Center, Fitness Center, and transportation buildings, effective 10/13 for one year at a fixed price of $18,828. Do I have a motion?
So move.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Calloca, I know that we talked a little bit about this prior. Would you?
Yeah, I can expand a little bit. Again, another area where we had savings. I'll give our core committee kudos to. When we put out bids for our two new buildings, we looked at the HVAC package, the air conditioning and heating package, as a whole. But one of the things we emphasized in our core committee was very adamant about it, and also the Board of Education was adamant about it. So we wanted a five-year maintenance plan. That was very uncalled for. The Ohio School Facilities Commission usually only recommends the normal one-year plan. But we put it as an alternate bid, because we wanted to see if we can get a better price. And we did get a good price that actually went under the construction project. So we do have maintenance plans on these two new buildings for five years, which is a good piece for the board, because now that shows us savings on our maintenance plan that we normally had out in our old buildings. So again, we're showing savings with collaborations of the buildings.
Thank you once again. Treasurer, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Dr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mr. Schnerrberger?
Yes.
Dr. Stellers?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Item 13A, which was an addendum, we have already voted on accepting that addendum. We now ask the treasurer to call the roll, please.
I just made a motion to add to the agenda, but I didn't make a motion to...
Oh, okay. Stand corrected. 13A, approve the recommendation to purchase a new Ford F-650 gas XLT dump truck from Allstate Ford for $74,940, replacing a 1978 International Harvester dump truck.
So move.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Treasurer, call the roll, please.
Dr. Stellers?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Dr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mr. Schnerrberger?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Item 14, approve Wednesday, November 20th, 2013, at 6:00 PM for the next regular session board meeting, and that will be held at the Austintown Intermediate School.
So move.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Treasurer, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Mock?
Yes.
Dr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mr. Schnerrberger?
Yes.
Dr. Stellers?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Motion is approved. We will now move to Item 15, Board Comments, and begin with Mr. Porter.
Any of the kids here back in the back here from Fitch High School, can any of you guys tell me what an academy or STEM program for next year is going to be about? Anybody willing? Because the public's been asking, and I've been asking, to have a demonstration, or a presentation here since May. And I'm being told that now it's going to be implemented in a covert operation-type style, to where they're just going to slide it in there. So all I'm asking is, I'm not against it, I just want information on it as well as the public does. It was supposed to be done in August, came and gone, September, came and gone. I asked Chris Burney last night, I said, "I want to know about it." I don't want you guys surprising people in March, April, May, and then there's nothing you can do about it. So I'm asking that if we're not going to do it this time, please have something in November for the public. Okay, I got to read this here then. "I want everyone to know that I love Austintown schools with all my heart. I don't like negativity surrounding our schools any more than you do. But you get to a point of frustration when problems aren't addressed. There are so many things, good things, about our schools, but they get diluted when there are so many small problems and a few major problems occurring. These smaller problems could easily be solved if arrogance could be removed from the equation. No one should be stubborn or conceited enough to think that they are never wrong. And if they do realize they are wrong, be man enough to admit it. Why do we waste people's time letting them speak at this meeting and rarely providing them with answers? We hardly ever discuss it as a board. What I picture in my mind a Board of Education meeting to be is first do the business of the school district, and then bring it to the level of a town hall meeting. Conversation back and forth in a professional adult manner. Not that we will get back to you in 48 hours, not that we will look into it and never really do. Not totally disregard Mr. Dation's concerns and hope he just goes away. And that really is a statement that a couple of people up here have made. We will put him off in hopes he will go away. I mean, that is just shameful. And think about this. Rarely do I hear anyone refute what I say. Why? Because it's the truth. I've been told that I will be prayed for, but rarely am I refuted. It has always bothered me, sitting up here on stage as a board, as if we are something or above you. I have visited three other local school districts' board meetings. All of them were at tables at people level. Calm and relaxed, not approachable, don't bother me atmosphere. Next month, I will be visiting the Struthers meeting. Remember two statements I've made in the past. I don't have all the answers, but I have some of the answers. And I'm not always right, but I'm not always wrong. There is one vote that I wish I could take back. It was a 5-0 vote to strip union members in transportation of their medical benefits. Colleen Murphy pleaded with us, and we are going to cause her such turmoil in her department that we may not recover from it. Ron Verb spent two hours predicting constant turnover, poor continuity of drivers for the kids, and hard-to-find quality people. Man, were they right. We lost 17 veteran bus drivers almost immediately. Colleen had to drive almost every morning and afternoon bailing us out. No one did her work while she was driving. The GPS took six months to program in her limited spare time. She asked us, practically begged us, to hire more people to get buses on the road. Overcrowding is a problem experienced by my own children this year, and eventually... Sorry, hit the wrong button. Let me start that over. Overcrowding is a problem experienced by my own children this year, and eventually, that bus was split up. She has come to us several times and basically was told, "Deal with it." The overcrowding incident that occurred was dismissed by the prosecutor. I was willing to accept my blame and pay 1/8 of the citation. I believe the driver, Colleen, five board members, and the superintendent should each pay their share. The drivers will no longer complain to Colleen, because they claim she doesn't do anything about it. What they don't know is she has come to us on numerous occasions asking for help. So the blame begins right here with the six of us. We are the cause of the transportation problem. No, Colleen is not perfect and has her fault, as we all do. Colleen also single-handedly wrote and successfully received a grant to purchase new buses, with the state paying 80% of the cost. None of us had anything to do with that, not even our own grant writer, so be leery of anyone claiming responsibility. Some other things that none of us had anything to do with. We have a new DARE car because of Jim Davis. Jim took the active role and approached Gray Greenwood, who graciously donated a car. This building, as well as the 3-5 building, came to life because of two people, Kim Smack and Lori Gavilier. Of course, they had several people helping them, but those two were relentless and pushed people to their max potential and got this bond issue passed. This building is beautiful and state-of-the-art, but I am wondering if it is too overwhelming and intimidating to five- to eight-year-olds. And I had no idea that she was going to speak tonight, the little girl. Well, I talked to her yesterday, but I knew she was going to write a speech. Have we lost that personal touch that is there in that small school setting? We are maxed out evidently, because we take kids from this building over to the 3-5 building to use their gyms. Let me put this in perspective. When a student here goes to the office or runs an errand, they always send two kids so they don't panic if they get lost. I think that is a great idea, but wanted to give you an example of how big we have gotten. Let me give you something that has happened over the last four years. Open enrollment has increased every year since its inception. This was something that was promised to be controlled, but it continues to escalate. 2010, we started off around 400. 11, we went to 525. 2012, 575. This year, we are at 691 total open enrollment kids, with 76 of them online. Where will this stop? People ask me, "Do you really not want a new high school for your kids? For our kids? Our property tax-paying kids? Absolutely. But if it means building a new high school so that our open enrollment goes through the roof, as one board member excitedly stated, then forget it. Wait till we start realizing and reaping the benefits of the shale boom. We will have to hold classes on the roof." Again, let me emphasize that I don't want to take anything away from our academics, because we are awesome. But I want to be perfect. I know that is virtually impossible, but I'm going to strive for it anyhow, just like our undefeated 8-0 Fitch Falcons. They aren't the biggest, not the strongest, not the fastest, but they adapt, conquer, overcome, and they achieve, because they do it as a team. Their biggest complaint this year was when they saw their leader wearing a Boardman Sparky shirt to the AMS Boardman game. I am all for supporting your kid, but sometimes you have to go neutral. And I'm pretty sure that the mortgage is paid by the red and blue, not the white and maroon. Over the last four years, we have seen a rise of an empire, but just like the fall of the Berlin Wall, to the overthrow of Saddam Hussein, to the demise of Muammar Gaddafi, all dictatorships and empires eventually come to an end. At some point, the people will rise up, become united, and stand up for what is right. Let me leave you with a joke and a thought. Politicians and diapers have one thing in common. They both should be changed regularly and for the same reason. My closing thought is, the status quo has to go. Thank you.
And next, we'll ask our student achievement liaison, Kathy Mock, to share her comments.
Thanks, Dave. As student achievement liaison, I'm sure it's a fair statement to make that the issue of homework has come up in many households already. Knowing the purpose of homework is important in providing the help your son or daughter needs to get the most out of. First, you need to find out the purpose of homework from the teacher who assigns it. Is homework used to finish work started at school, to provide more practice with new skills, or to complete large projects? Next, sort out the reasons you want your child to complete homework. Is it to help develop discipline and a productive work ethic? Finally, frequently talk with your children about the importance of homework, whatever the reasons, so they understand why they are doing it. It is helpful to determine a regular time and place to complete homework. Make sure your son or daughter is responsible for their homework. And if there is no homework to be completed, encourage reading. And by all means, we need to be good role models and read too. Congratulations to all of our Fitch Athletic Hall of Fame inductees and their families. A job well done to Tim Kelty and his committee for Memorial Weekend. The Falcon family lost one of their own this past week. We were all saddened at the sudden death of Wally Bell, Major League Baseball umpire and 1983 Fitch graduate. He will be greatly missed by all who knew him. There has been much said about our transporting of our students to and from school. I have ridden school buses in my teaching career, and I did ride one of our bus routes this past spring. I did not see any issues with the safety of our children. However, I did witness people stopping drivers and trying to hold conversations with them, which takes the focus away from them doing their job. If you have any concerns regarding your child's safety on the bus or at a stop, please call me. My number is (330) 720-4239, or see me in person. I will ride that bus, along with our security officer, Lieutenant Tom Collins. If there is an issue that is determined by our safety experts that threatens a child's safety, then we will problem-solve together and fix it. So again, my number is (330) 720-4239. And finally, I want to thank everyone for supporting our students' extracurricular activities at all levels. Tonight, our girls' soccer team, well, they've already started, to battle the Jackson Polar Bears in tournament action, and we wish our Lady Falcons the best of luck. I would also like to commend Coach Anarela and his staff for another exciting football season. And it should be noted that under Coach Anarela's and staff's mentoring, that the 2012 team was honored by the Ohio High School Football Coaches Association as an academic all Ohio based on the 3.68 GPA of its top 22 varsity letterman. And that means that they finished among the top... And that means that they finished among the top twenty football teams throughout the entire state. It's my understanding that they are on track again this year, not only on the field, but in the classroom, too. So my final words would be, Falcons, never give up.
Thank you, Kathy. Dr. Ritchie?
Well, first of all, a lot of this... Hey, Jack, before you leave, I just want to tell you, I think you guys, along with your classmates, have done one heck of a job. It's something that'll be here forever, and we really appreciate you deserve many things. I also want to say that those that were at the Hall of Fame and honored probably ten, maybe twelve of our Hall of Fame recipients, Tim Kelty once again and his committee did one super job. It was very, very impressive the whole night and very well-received, and they should be commended. I did have the opportunity, if you want to call it that, to be at calling hours and also to be at the funeral in Fitch High School for Wally Bell. And I will tell you that the community and his fellow umpires and so on were very, very supportive. It was a very nice service, and Wally would have been very honored the way they ran that. Uniontown Night Friday, hope everybody can get out and go down. We want to see them go to that no-loss and continue on that same manner. Kathy mentioned the girls' soccer team, which my granddaughter plays, and if you may have seen me looking at my cellphone here a few minutes ago, I was trying to get the score, and we're losing two-nothing. But they're still hanging in there, so again, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Stellers?
As legislative liaison, I'll report on some action in Columbus. With the return of the General Assembly to the fall session, we anticipate a number of educational bills. One significant issue will be an effort to pass a bill to establish new graduation requirements and high-stakes testing requirements for high school diplomas. The State Board of Education has been holding hearings on this topic and plans to see their recommendations enacted this fall to avoid a potential scenario that would require our current students to have to take the Ohio Graduation Test, the OGT, as well as other PARC assessments based on Common Core standards. The new requirements might involve up to ten end-of-the-year course exams to replace the OGT, as well as offer several various types of endorsements on student diplomas. A placeholder bill, House Bill 193, has been introduced. Another area relates to Common Core itself. Opponents have challenged it as a federal takeover of local control and attacked various aspects of the standards, including the recommended reading lists. Representative Andy Thompson of Marietta has introduced a bill, House Bill 237, that would essentially prohibit the Ohio Department of Education from implementing the Common Core standards and prohibit the use of PARC assessments. In addition, the bill would require the State Board of Education to conduct hearings on Common Core in every congressional district before going forward. We've changed courses, I don't know how many times in the last two decades. I hope we don't have to change again. Another bill, House Bill 240, has twenty-six cosponsors. It would eliminate the special elections in February and August. While similar efforts in the past have failed, the sheer number of sponsors in this case isn't a good sign. And there's a similar bill also in the Senate. As you've heard, there's many good reasons to be happy and proud about the accomplishments of our students and staff. The dedications of AIS and AES celebrated the collaboration of our students, parents, community, teachers, and the state of Ohio to provide a beautiful and high-tech environment for the district's K-5 population. Our teaching staff is to be commended, highly commended, for their efforts in completing the Ohio Department of Education requirement for the establishment of the student learning outcomes. Even with constantly changing guidelines, changing forms, and changing instructions, our teachers have worked tirelessly and with determination to produce the objectives and file them. I don't intend to provide a complete list, but here are a few defining programs which contribute to our sense of pride. Nineteen college credit courses are offered at Fitch. We lead the county in STEM education. We provide a number of educational options, including Falcon Pride Online and a ten-year-old grant program, which was renamed Hope Academy last year. Several of our schools have been designated as Schools of Promise and receive the national recognition as Blue Ribbon Schools. The establishment of all-day kindergarten without additional tax. The Arts and Speech and Debate Program. In the arts, our Speech and Debate Program is highly acclaimed, as is the Fitch Concert Choir, which travels to veterans' hospitals annually to thank and entertain vets. Visiting bands look with envy as the home fans rise and clap while the Falcon Band plays Stars and Stripes Forever. ACTV and the Fitch newspaper, The Talon, are noteworthy. The levels of student participation and of success in our athletic programs are the very envy of area schools. A significant statistic is that nineteen of our football team are members of the National Honor Society. Is there anything really wrong? I don't think so. But I want to respond to some comments that were made at last month's Board of Education meeting. Replies to most of the questions which were asked have been provided on many occasions. Apparently, not receiving desired answers, the questioners assume that by repeated restatements of their questions, demands, accusations, and attempts at intimidation, they'll get their ways. So with the goal of bringing the harassment and bullying to an end, and with a desire to return civility to meetings, I'll provide some facts and insights. Going back to the day when there was just one traffic light within Austintown Township, it was never a policy, procedure, or routine practice to pick up elementary students at their driveways. In the day when drivers owned their own buses, they could administer their routes as they felt appropriate. There have been obvious exceptions for students who live on main thoroughfares, such as Mahoning, Meridian, Forty-Six, Raccoon, Kirk, New, or Turner. Misconception might have arisen from the time of half-day kindergarten, when fewer than two-hundred students were transported on midday runs, and the majority of stops might have been at driveways. The routes have been established for many, many years. The budget crunch has changed the way that our district accomplishes many of its functions, however, never has cost reduction compromised the safety of our kids. Additional comments found fault with the procedures and staffing in the Transportation Office. First, it is unethical to volunteer service to a district operation and then to evaluate it, especially in public. In Ohio, boards of education evaluate only the superintendent and the treasurer. Evaluation of other district personnel and procedures is a task of the administration. Secondly, discussions regarding effective and efficient ways of doing business are ongoing with full knowledge of all Board of Education members. A question was raised about the storage of the Falcon Mobile Medical Unit. Since it is valued at about four times the cost of a school bus... I'm sorry. Well, I said it a different way the first time. Since it is the value of four school buses, it's stored in an enclosed service bay. If the bay is needed, the mobile unit is moved until the bay is available for overnight parking. Section 3313.642 of the Ohio Revised Code states that "The Board of Education of a city, exempted village, or local school district shall not be required to furnish free of charge to the pupils attending the public schools any materials used in the course of instruction, with the exception of the necessary textbooks or electronic textbooks. Boards of education may establish fees to cover costs of such materials and enforce the payment of such fees and charges by withholding the grades and credits of the pupils concerned." The Austintown Board of Education establishes fees for specific courses. And with a budget shortfall following the defeat of an operating levy in November 2008, it instituted a twenty-dollar-per-year fee for materials used in its classrooms. Fees collected during the 2012-2013 school year totaled sixty-five thousand dollars. The former Leonard Kirk Elementary School Building was brought into question with an air of suspicion. Here's how the Austintown Early Learning Center came to be. Late last winter, the Mahoning County Development Disabilities Board, which operates Leonard Kirk's school, decided that it could no longer house preschool programs of the Mahoning County Educational Service Center. Students with identified disabilities must be transported to educational settings which conduct programs for their needs. This is no problem for Austintown preschool students since the school, Leonard Kirk's, was in its boundaries. Several years ago, there were two Austintown students who required placement in a unit that wasn't offered by Leonard Kirk's, and the students were transported to Springfield Local School District. The students required aides in addition to the transportation people. The cost for transporting those two students for one year was sixty-two thousand dollars. Didn't take much time to do the math and conclude they would be most cost-effective to house the units ourselves, and the Board of Education was adamant in its desire to keep the students within Austintown. The Leonard Kirk Building has a concrete slab roof, which has relatively low maintenance costs and adequate mechanical systems. Since no students that are enrolled in the Early Learning Center would have been enrolled in another district facility, the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission granted permission for the repurposed use of Leonard Kirk. The same commission will not fund offices for district-wide functions. So offices which had been crammed into storage spaces and areas for other uses were also moved to the Early Learning Center. It's a perfect example of the best decision having been made based on data available, and then, as time changed and new data became available, the decision was changed. We were very fortunate to have had a ready solution to what might have been a very costly way to provide for our youngest learners. If surplus or abandoned school facilities are sold, they must be offered to charter schools within the district at fair market prices. There are none in Austintown Township currently. If none comes forward, an auction is conducted to provide the best possible return to the school district. However, as was promised by the Board of Education during the 2010 campaign for the passage of the bond issue to fund AIS and AES, the abandoned buildings would be demolished. Leonard Kirk Real Estate is not zoned for business. Therefore, use by any entity other than a church or a school district is prohibited. Suggested use as a youth center or community center while filling a definite need would be cost-prohibitive for Austintown local schools, since it's a struggle to fund even current programs. The school district has worked closely with township officials and township park personnel to explore uses for school property and equipment. The 5800 Mahoning Avenue property has been sold twice and put up for auction twice. Developers unable to secure tenants failed to finalize sales agreements. And neither auction yielded bids which had offers that came close to the appraised value of the property. However, offers did come in following the auctions. The suggestion that a clause in the original deed which requires reversion to the John H. Fitch family if the property was not used for schools was the reason for the collapse of the sale is false. The issue of the reversionary requirement was investigated by the noted school law firm Asquire Sanders of Cleveland. Such a stipulation cannot be removed from a deed. However, if due diligence is taken to identify possible heirs, and none was found in this case, title insurance companies are able to insure the title. If, subsequent to the sale, heirs are located, insurance payment would be made to reimburse the developer for any loss. This procedure was accomplished for the first sale six years ago. Sorry it took so long.
Thank you, from our legislative liaison. Too many mics here. I want to express a sincere appreciation to all those who took part in the success of the Austintown event, the Awesome Austintown Event. Jack Kidd, Larry Cadman, and the class of 1962. It was truly a day in which heroes were honored. The new school's dedication and the veterans' memorial ceremonies were well-attended, well-planned, and memorable for all those who were able to take part. I would like to express a special thanks to Cub Pack 184, the Fitch Choir, as well as the Fitch Band, which played at the memorial dedication. There were many positive comments for days to follow after the event regarding, in particular, the new school walkthrough and the celebration in general. Congratulations again to the Leonard Kirk staff for earning the School of Promise recognition by the state. We continue to see academic growth in the district. Speaking of staff, let us recognize their efforts regarding the SLO, Student Learning Objectives Process. There has been a lot of feedback on the hard work which has produced some amazing results. Thank you. Remember also to mark October 28th on your calendar at 6:00 PM in the Fitch Auditorium for our Town Hall meeting about the new local-state report card. Very important to us going forward. The presentation on bus safety was very informative and hopefully clears up some information. It does provide the district the opportunity to use this incident as a learning experience. The responsibility of bus safety lies not only with our drivers, but with the students riding the buses and the citizens on the road. The district website is exciting news. It has been something that has been asked to be upgraded, and soon we will see its rollout. Another item which has been completed were the rails in the home stands of Falcon Stadium. A lot of positive feedback, and thanks to Falcon Forward. Congratulations to the robotics team for their success and to all the fall sports and extracurriculars for their competition. There was a big win at Falcon Stadium against Maslin Washington two weeks ago. Let's continue to get out and support our kids in all their endeavors. Any comments tonight, Mrs. Herschel?
I'll just say, first of all, that this month, the board has approved many of the yearly budget items needed for the district. And although the new, you know, beautiful buildings that we're in tonight have been built and occupied, there's still a lot of things in my office dealing with the financial issues and payments still to be completed. Just this month, although we started fiscal year July 1st, just this month with our last payment, has the state finally begun to fund the school on 13th, 14th, the school year payment amounts. So it's beginning to allow us to feel comfortable with the revenue and the expenditure levels that we have set for this year. So thank you for your approval tonight.
Mr. Caloosa, Superintendent?
Thank you. To Jack and Larry and the Committee of... Memorial Committee of 1962, thank you for what you guys have done for us. That will be something that'll be everlasting for the students of the Austintown schools. For our students in the back, and I see a smiling face. I didn't have an opportunity to talk about our speech team, and then when I walked in the back, I was reminded of an email I got. Again, we've had some great success in the Austintown schools, but what our speech team has done last year and what they're being recognized for now, and we will recognize them in our future board meeting, they are one of the top five percent speech teams, not in the Mahoning Valley, not in the state of Ohio, but in the country. They're rated one of the top five speech teams in the country. They're rated one of the top five speech teams in the country. Last year, they went down to Alabama for the national competition, and this year, we're hoping that they can go to, where's it at, Tennessee?
Kansas.
Kansas. Hopefully, they can make it to Kansas. Great job, we're very proud of you. For all those folks that did sign the agenda, someone from Central Ospey reaching out to you with your concerns. We have done that in the past. We've reached out to everyone that has ever signed up for a board office or for public speaking, and on our form, you check yes or no if you'd like a response back, and we've reached out to everyone that has asked for a response back. Mr. President, we had two students talk about bullying, and I do need to put the Board of Education on notice that I feel I'm being bullied by Mr. Porter and being intimidated. There's something I need to read to the Board and to the community. Seeks special privileges for personal gain. Personal assumes unauthorized authority. Criticizes employees publicly. Discloses confidential information. Places the interests of one group or committee above the interest of the entire district. Withholds facts from the superintendent, particularly about incompetence of an employee. Announces future actions before a prospective has been discussed by the Board of Education. Considers a complaint against an employee which is not first submitted to the superintendent. That is directly from our board policy. One of my duties as superintendent is to uphold the board policy for all employees and all staff members. And the Board of Education has to live abiding these board policies because you are paid by the Austintown School District. So I ask the Board President to please inform all board members that they must follow the board policy, and Mr. Porter has violated almost every one of these ethic violations. This Board believes that public education should be conducted in an ethical manner. In addition to state law, the conduct of the board members should conform to the Code of Ethics recommended by the Ohio School Boards Association, which include, "It is unethical for a board member to do every one of the following ones I've just stated." That was adopted September 19th, 2006, readopted October 16th, 2012, before any of you were board members besides Dr. Ritchie. I feel as superintendent that I've been unfairly treated by Mr. Porter, and I ask the Board to do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caloocca, and the Board will take these statements under consideration and will determine the course of action necessary, should there be any necessary. Having completed board comments, Item 16, adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn? We have a motion and a second. Treasurer, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Mock? Yes. Dr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Mr. Schneberger?
Yes.
Dr. Stellers?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
In association with Austintown Local